But we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Kate, was anything? No? So then that will bring us to Tony, our spotlight from Brentwood.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to share some highlights since the last time we met. As you remember, we try to break all of our recognitions up into our four big bucket strategic plan categories, so we'll start with it.
Maybe we just use the mouse. Nope, I'm not sure that's going to make either of them paper.
Student success. All right, that is a photo of Brentwood High School senior Logan Hawkins, and he's been recognized as a St. Louis County Outstanding Student Leader. This prestigious award honors students for their community service, leadership, citizenship, personal character, and extracurricular involvement. As part of this recognition, Logan joined his fellow honorees for a one-day leadership conference at Washington University in St. Louis. There's one senior representative from each of the 54, I believe, high schools in the St. Louis County area, so he was one of 54. The conference allowed students to work closely with university professionals to deepen their understanding of key issues facing the St. Louis region, so working to problem-solve and think and brainstorm ideas to tackle health care, education, housing, economic development, those type of things. So just a cool recognition, and he got to go to the St. Louis County Council Chambers and recognized and get his photo taken on the sand page, so that's a very cool recognition. So this next photo, on Thursday, October 24th, Brentwood High School hosted its annual Senior Career Day. This event included practical and career-related workshops that prepare students for life after graduation. Students had an opportunity to meet with business professionals about a lot of different topics: first impressions and community networking, financial planning, conflict management, effective social media use, self-marketing and building, creating, and managing a resume, and professional and business communications. And then each senior also got an opportunity to work on their interpersonal communication skills by participating in mock interviews, and this would be one with Dr. Zelensky.
It's the back of my head. Very impressive student. Very impressive.
Yeah, just a really cool event to see. Lots of different businesses, St. Louis Cardinals, Northwest Mutual, lots of different businesses to come in and share with our kids, you know, about life after graduation. So very cool. And our next recognition in student success, Brentwood High School junior Kenzie Kurde earned all-state cross-country honors for the third year in a row with a ninth-place finish at last Saturday's Class II Cross-Country Championships in Columbia. And if any of you remember what the weather was like on Saturday morning, I saw Kenzie this afternoon and just said, like, how bad was it? She said, "It was pretty muddy and pretty rainy, and then they had parts of the course," this is Gans Creek Cross-Country Course, it's the University of Missouri's course, "but they had parts of it, like, sectioned off or with cones and things just to make sure kids were being safe as they were running." So not ideal conditions, but still a great performance for Kenzie. She finished the 5K course with a time of 20 minutes, 11.6 seconds. Her junior season included eight top-10 finishes, including five in the top five, and a first-place finish at the conference meet on October 19th, so a very good season for Kenzie, Cross-Country folks. All right, now into school culture, and I love this one. This is Jen, the therapy dog, and she visited Mark Twain Elementary School a couple of weeks ago to share an important message with students and staff. Studies show that time spent with therapy dogs can reduce anxiety, lower blood pressure, and even alleviate physical pain. Jim's visit was part of the Duo Dogs Program, a nonprofit dedicated to creating positive change through the unique bond between people and therapy dogs. And we see Duo Dogs in our schools all the time. It's just, they just come around, and it's great, and we have our parents that are involved in Duo specifically, and there's all different types of dogs. I have seen a bunch. I had never met Jim. I got to pet Jim, and my wife was jealous. They give kids, like, little trading cards with the picture of the dog on it, and like, a baseball trading card with facts and stuff about each dog. So just a cool way, you know, to, we talk about academics and performance and things like that, but the social-emotional side of things, this is just a great example of that. All right, and just like a few months ago with sixth-grade camp, this is our eighth-grade camp at Brentwood Middle School, so eighth graders had a blast during their three-day trip to the Touch of Nature Outdoor Education Center in Carbondale, Illinois. I don't think the weather could have been any nicer while they were down there. Still, you know, in October, a little bit cooler, so they did different activities, no swimming in the lake this time. But different activities, so students developed their communication, collaboration, and critical thinking skills while engaged in outdoor activities like archery, rock climbing, team-building. Right here, they were working together as a team to build shelters, to see what they could configure, how it worked best, things like that. So just like our sixth-grade camp, it's all about learning, growing, and making memories. So, you know, you might not necessarily know what happened in eighth-grade math class, but you have a great experience of eighth-grade camp. And then another school culture, and this is specifically to, I'm working with student retention in grades 6 through 12, so this is one of many shots that I took at Brentwood High School Info Night. So the school was buzzing with excitement last Thursday as current incoming and prospective students and their families explored the personalized academic and extracurricular opportunities during Brentwood High School Info Night. Students and families had a chance to meet exceptional teachers and staff, tour facilities, connect with student ambassadors, ask them questions, what's it like, what do you like, what are you involved in, get that personal perspective, a student voice perspective, and discover how we're preparing students for success in whatever pathway they choose when they move on from us, that we're ready to go. So just a great, a great evening, very interactive, very engaging, even from last year. Lots of hands-on type things. The math section of it reminded me of Goodwill Hunting, where they put the equation up on the board. So Jerry and Caitlin had, like, a whiteboard with the different, you know, math equations, and middle-school kids were getting up there and figuring it out and things like that. It was very cool to see. So a very good turnout. All right, for Unified Community Engagement, Andy. So this is Andy with a group of students from Washington University, so Wash U, students from the Wash U Pathfinder Fellows Program. Recently toured the District 3 ICC 500 Storm Shelters. These state-of-the-art safe rooms are designed to provide near-absolute protection in extreme weather events. Our storm shelters exceed International Building Code standards by combining safety with functional spaces that enrich your daily educational experience. So as you guys know, Mark Twain's storm shelter also serves as the school's library and media center. On the McGrath and BECC campus, the storm shelter is also a gymnasium. And then here on this campus for the middle and high school, it's the fitness center. So not just, you know, when you think about a storm shelter, you think about, you know, getting down, hunkered down in a big concrete box, but these are just great examples of taking those things that are now required and turning them into functional spaces that they don't feel like that. They're still, you know, open and inviting, and, you know, at Mark Twain, there's windows. There's windows in a storm shelter? Yes, and Andy showed it. It blew the kids away, because, Anna, I thought it was cool too. Andy pressed the button, and these giant shutters, like, what, how heavy? A few thousand pounds. Just boom, just came down at the click of a button and then back up. So very cool. And we've been doing this, or Andy has been doing this for, how long? Four years. So, yeah, a great partnership with Wash U, you know, a very highly respected university right down the street, so why not let those students come in and get a hands-on example of innovation and safety and functional space? Very cool. All right, and then a couple of fun ones. So Halloween, of course, is always, is a big thing in Brentwood. So we celebrated with Tripp Streets and creative costume parades, classic storybook characters up there, we see Dr. Seuss, prehistoric predators, lots of dinosaurs, the big inflatable dinosaur costumes are still very popular, superheroes, Star Wars, but just a great way to get everyone involved. You know, last year, when everyone was kind of over on this side, in the same neighborhood campus, you know, it was, it was great to have both McGrath and Mark Twain come over and interact with the middle and high school kids. And now that Mark Twain is back, the middle and high school kids still made an effort to bring some of those students over there to hand out things to them, to make sure they've kind of got the same type of experience over there, so a nice, yeah. Next, another great one, just from last Friday. Representatives from the city of Brentwood stopped by to Brentwood Middle School to present students and staff with a check for $250 for finishing first in this year's Brentwood Days Parade. The school's float, "A Night to Remember," was a stunning display of creativity and teamwork that wowed judges and showcased their hard work, innovation, and school spirit. So all of that money will go back into the Student Activities Fund to fund more student opportunities. So last year, they finished second and earned a $100 prize. For this year, first place, $250. Now that, you know, now they've got a target on their backs. The parade folks better step their game up, because middle school is struggling with being involved in the parade. So just a great, a great day and a great partnership with the city, and, yeah, very cool. And then our last one, Veterans Day, just yesterday, it feels like, a long time ago, but it was just yesterday morning. So, you know, students, staff, and families came together yesterday to honor the incredible men and women who have dedicated their lives to serving our country. Their courage, commitment to sacrifice, inspire us to uphold the values of freedom, unity, and equality that define our nation. So very cool programs, both at Mark Twain and McGrath, very different programs if you go to each of them, but very interactive, very, you know, heartfelt to thank our veterans for what they've done. Yeah, or just, just a great community event.
It was very, I mean, at both schools, there were the students related to the heavy lifting, so it was great to see.
All right.
Teared up a little bit at the Mark Twain.
Anybody have any questions? Appreciate it.
Thanks, Amy. So, it's so fun. I love these.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can do roll call, please.
Mark Cisarone.
Here.
Ryan Dodson.
Here.
Ryan Flynn.
Here.
Keith Reichenberg.
Here.
Catherine Spall.
Here.
Lindsay Spencer.
Here.
Terry Trask.
Here.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved and moves us into the superintendent's report.
See if I can figure out how to do this. So the first thing we're going to do tonight is talk about board filing. Oh, already did it. So the first thing we're going to talk about is, we have a presentation that was put together with the help of MSBA and information that they shared with us, and Tony is going to work his magic through this presentation and just clip the part where I'm presenting about the rules, and he's going to push that out via social media and put it on our website along with the full presentation tonight. We won't go through the entire presentation. It's a little bit more in the weeds than we probably need to get into, but we will push that out so that anybody will have access, and then, of course, they can reach out to any board member should they need to. I'm sorry, I have too, too many, hit my computer, just put it there. So first off, about the Board of Education, obviously, as board members, you all know this information, so if there are things that you think would be very important for a prospective board member to know, please feel free to interject as I'm going through these slides, because we want to make sure that people have all of the information necessary. Obviously, our Board of Education is made up of seven people. Our major job is to set policy, select the superintendents, which you just recently did, and will hopefully not have to do for a while.
Not saying.
Then you adopt the annual budget and then set the tax rate, are some of the key jobs of a member of a Board of Education. It is a three-year commitment, and it is overlapping terms, and so this year, we have two. There'll be two people up for reelection, and it is a volunteer position. There is no pay, no salary for this job. You're all volunteering your time out of the goodness of your hearts and due to the dedication that you have for the school district and your community. So the requirements for being, for running for the Board of Education, you must be a citizen of the United States, a resident taxpayer of the district. You have resided in the district in Missouri for a minimum of one year immediately preceding the election. The election is held in April. You must be at least 24 years of age and not delinquent in state income taxes, personal property taxes, municipal taxes, or real property taxes on your place of residence. The further candidate requirements, it gets more wordy here. If you have a past or present corporate officer of any fee office, that office does not owe any taxes to the state, so if that is the case, it applies to you. You can't owe any taxes there. You cannot have been found guilty or pled guilty to a felony under federal laws. You are not required to be registered as a sex offender, so you cannot be a registered. The wording doesn't work. You may not be a registered sex offender, and the wording.
We're fine.
MSBA on some of that, yeah. You must file a required campaign disclosure report with the Missouri Ethics Commission for all previous elections in which you were a candidate. And that paperwork, Kate Hastings will help you with and answer questions, as will other board members. Time commitment, the time commitment is two meetings a month. We have a policy meeting, as we know, on the first Tuesday of the month, and then the business meetings are on the third Tuesday. Those are the most amount of board meetings that we have in a month. But there are other kind of committee meetings that are on the next slide. The meetings are between two to three hours with closed and open sessions. And then, of course, preparing for the meetings, which is going through the board packets, reading my lengthy weekend updates that I send once a week, just to make sure that you're prepared for the board meetings. And then there is 18 and a half hours of mandated board member training that we get you set up with through MSBA to make sure that you can meet those requirements, so it's not something that any board member has to take on their own. We will help them get all of that signed up and squared away. As we mentioned, there's also ongoing training, there's also special workshops. As we mentioned, Kate, Lindsay and I, we're just at the fall, big fall workshop, and I really encourage anybody to go to at least once if they happen to do. It's a great opportunity to learn what's going on around our state. And then there are, again, other voluntary professional development opportunities, both here locally in St. Louis as well as across the state through MSBA. And then board members also serve on committees, particularly the board advisory committees, and are asked to be present at special events when possible with their schedules, like opening kickoff, special sporting events, and other events, just to be present in the community as they can be. Then roles and responsibilities. This is a slide that really outlines the role of the school board, establishing goals and the vision of the district with our new strategic plan. We're in a really good place with very clear goals for the next five years. Another large responsibility of the board is to adopt policy, and we work with MSBA on those policies, and they provide them for us and bring them to the board for adoption. The superintendent, again, as I mentioned, hiring a superintendent as well as evaluating a superintendent and delegating kind of the day-to-day operations to the superintendent. Also approving the budget, and then advocacy, which is sharing district information with local legislators in the community, really just being those champions of the school districts and public education throughout their role as board members. So these next two slides kind of talk about the difference between the Board of Education roles, and I think they're really important slides for those who are running to be on the board is to know the role the board has versus what the superintendent does. So that maintaining a global view of the district, really looking at that strategic plan and outlining the what of our outcomes, and communicating, focusing through the government documents, which are agendas, policies, like we said, budgets, CP, superintendent evaluation, kind of that bigger view. And then as a board, you are able to vote on those different things, and that is how you kind of have the voice in what happens, is through your vote. And then providing direction, again, to the superintendent through things like the strategic plan and evaluation process.
If you're, how do you hold that second bullet? Is that supposed to be of the district?
Of the district outcome.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. So we'll go back and double check that. Go forward, put it on the website. And then the superintendent is really, I think, I like how they talks about the tactical, the how. So that what we're working on is the focus of the board, and then how we achieve those outcomes are left, or, again, as part of the team of eight that we work together on, that it should be a surprise, but that the how and working with the cabinet-level team to implement and achieve the outcomes that the board has asked us to achieve. The board approves policies, but the procedures and exactly how to implement those policies are left up to the superintendent and my cabinet and administration. And then my job is to provide direction to the staff that is aligned to the strategic plan that the board adopts. This is another important piece for board members, is that as an individual, you have no more authority than any other member of the community, but it is a collective authority of the school board. It's when we act together as a board that allows for the direction of the district. Okay, now for the important stuff, which is how do you actually file? Okay, luckily, oh, oh, my. We're having some technical difficulties all day today. It's okay, I have the slides in front of me, and they'll be available on there.
Could you flip forward?
That's not working right now, okay, so, okay, that's okay. So this will be available, but just some important things. Filing opens on December 10th. It will be here at Brentwood High School in the district offices. Our wonderful Kate Hastings will help walk anybody through who is interested. The dates that she's available will be posted and are going to be a part of, are part of the presentation. But again, it starts December 10th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., which is the first day. And we will be closed on December 24th and 25th for winter break. And then we will be open Tuesday, December 31st, which is the last day to file from 1:00 until 5:00. And again, that will be done here at Brentwood High School. There are lots of different resources that are also linked in the presentation that will be available for anyone who is interested. But I would tell you that the best resources are our current Board of Education members, so making sure to reach out with our board president, Lindsay Spencer, as well as any other board members if anybody has questions. So, making sure to reach out with our board president, Lindsey Spencer, as well as any other board members if anybody has questions. And then Kate Hastings, I know all of our board members can vouch for what a great hope she is in the process of going through the filing. So, she can answer any questions as well. So, those are some of the basics of school board filing. And again, I've never filed to be a school board member. So, if there are any thoughts or anything, anything that anybody on the board wants to make sure that is available for someone who's thinking about running that you wanted to add?
Who is the other one that is up besides me this year?
Ryan.
Ryan.
I will not be running, so we will definitely have one for sure open position for the next term.
And I would say, like to anyone who's watching, of course, feel free to reach out to any of us. Keith is going to give you a hard time.
Highly encourage people to do it. It's a great opportunity to be part of a great thing.
I think we all welcome anybody who wants to talk to any one of us about it. I mean, I have to talk to anybody, I assume anybody else.
Yeah, absolutely. I think talking to other board members is really important to really understand what goes into it.
They're welcome to.
That'll be a lot. And I do plan on applying.
Karen, thank you very much for your service today.
I would love to be a Keith Rayber. I really would love to be another Keith Rayber, but I don't know that it will be the right timing. So, with my kids, you know, both being gone, I think it'd be a great time for hopefully, you know, a young parent or any parent, you know, to come and join.
So, nine years or 12?
I did, 2015. I did a year and a half of a term and then, I think, three terms after that.
Thank you.
I love it. I really do.
And thank you for the summary. It's nice to have that out there, too.
And we will share all of this information on our social media and websites in the very near future. Okay, yes. Yeah, sure do. I can't go back, so we're having some technical difficulties that we will hopefully work through in the future. We're not quite at this point yet, so we'll hold off on that. If there are no other questions or any other comments around school board candidate, the next thing that we have on the agenda is the early childhood tuition and reduced tuition application proposals. This is a little bit different than I have ever done this before, but we are, we have been meeting with Kristen Clemens, who couldn't make it this evening. I told her I could present this pretty confidently. We have been needing to talk about our tuition rates and how they compare to our comparables. We were getting a little bit out of sync with many of our comparables. So, the request is, the tuition rates that are requested tonight is a 3% increase from, and the comparable districts that we pulled were Ladue, Clayton, McWhorter, Richmond Heights, Webster Groves, and Valley Park, were the early childhoods that Kristen felt most compared to ours. Our, that's equivalent to about $30 more a month for our early childhood. It still puts us below Ladue and Clayton. I did reach out to some contacts. That is all of our comparables without any of their increases moving forward. And I did find out that one of our comparables will be asking for a 5% increase. So, this keeps us in the comparables, but also is reasonable that it's not such a burden on our families. Kind of puts us in that where we all feel comfortable. And so, those are, the prices are listed. And then, we do offer reduced and free spots for families that qualify. And that's what the links are for those forms. And it outlines, you know, the amount and the process based on the information that we're given and kind of what that equates to on the spreadsheet as far as like a reduced versus free. We do, right now, we have, Kristen just cleared the waitlist. We had two families that were on the waitlist who had signed up in October and we are now at a space where we are full. We do not have space and we have no one on the waitlist. We do the sweet spots that we want to be in. We do have a few families that are taking advantage of reduced or free tuition. It is part of the application process and the things. So, we seem to be meeting the needs of our community and our families. And with this tuition increase, we feel that we're, you know, fairly trying to keep up with the increasing cost of everything while not putting too much of a burden on our families. That is our request is to approve the tuition rate as outlined.
I'll make a motion that we approve the BECC 2025 to 2026 tuition and reduced application proposal as outlined.
Discussion?
Remind me last year what our bump was.
It was 2%.
It was less than 3%, I remember.
And that's why when we sat down with the comparables, we were getting a little, and again, knowing what I now know, I feel like 3% makes sense.
And I do like that you provided the sliding scale. So, knowing that we're able to meet the needs of some families in that range of income is great. Hey, any other questions about the tuition? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are approved.
Thank you. And next up, we're going to call Andy down to talk about the high school building seat HVAC because we have a lot, just finishing up one HVAC and moving on to another.
So, this is kind of more of an informational thing. It's, we're not voting on anything, but I want to give everybody an update on what's going on with the, it's actually the HVAC that serves this area as well as the social studies and math rooms. So, a few months ago, I engaged with TMI, who has done our gym units and our auditorium units. And I said, we need good solid pricing, what we can do here to make sure that we can replace a unit that is 32 years old. It's becoming not reliable anymore. And we've talked about this before. So, we spent a lot of time over the summer, you know, just going through everything, just checking to see, can we reuse anything, you know? And the initial thought was, yes, we can. Like, we can make, make a unit, we can have a unit that does the hot deck and cold deck, which is like kind of an old-fashioned way of, you know, heating and cooling the building. It just wasn't going to work. So, we were able to come up with basically the same system that we came up with for upstairs and downstairs of the same building, which is a gas, gas heated unit with, with cooling. And then, you know, we have fresh air coming in and everything else. But it is also more energy efficient. So, it's going to be a little bit more extensive than we thought it would be. We kind of wish we had done it, you know, before the renovations had happened. So, we came up with a price that was going to be about $471,000. Now, that is with everything. That's with replacing the ceilings that we have to tear out and replacing electrical stuff. But also, you get brand-new VAVs. Instead of reusing your hot deck and cold decks in every room, you get brand-new ducting and everything else. So, we're working on, you know, getting other pricing from other co-ops. So, this is through a AMIA co-op. We're going to work through another co-op to try to get some other competitive pricing. Not sure how well that's going to go, but at least we'll have some kind of a comparison there. So, any questions?
Real quick, there was a presentation, maybe you'll remember, Keith, where a company came to us, we had a booklet, there's all these different companies that helped schools. And if we became part of their, well, I probably got it home, I'll look for it. But they were all different HVAC and electrical and all these different things. And if we became part of this, there was discount rates for different things and different services and all that other stuff. And it was supposed to be a really good thing. Just curious, if I find that, I'll give it to you if we can even look into that because it was something that they were promoting to all these different companies. But I remember telling my husband's company about it, that it listed, it was kind of like a directory of all the companies that serviced education facilities and gave discounts in all these different areas and whatever. And it was, it behued them to become part of this because...
So, was it like a co-op?
It might have been. It wasn't called a co-op. But I mean, just curious.
Sure.
And I keep everything. So, I'll go home and look in my school board.
Yeah, we can look at it.
House stuff because it might be, you know, worth at least looking into those companies. I don't know how much of it we have to piece and how much TMI is going to do because I think you sometimes outsource certain sections of it and whatever. And maybe they could use some of those resources that, and I think it was a 10-year.
I don't remember.
You don't remember that, okay.
Yeah, so like, yeah, so with the co-ops, a lot of times, like, so like, TMI will do the, the big part of the bidding and then they will feed it out to smaller companies to do a lot of the work. So, like, so we did the gymnasium HVAC units, which we just finished, which is, was a great project. So, TMI did the big part of the bidding. They're going to do all the controls and everything else. And then, RFB did, you know, the duct work and all the other stuff. And then Liberty did the electrical work. So, yeah, it all just kind of feeds into one thing. But which, the gym units have been, that was a good project. We did really well on that. So, yeah, we'll, we'll look into that. But we're also looking into going to like the TIPS program. That's another cooperating purchasing agreement thing that we have. What, what's hard about, you know, what, schools in general is like, you know, you, you have your own like operating systems, you know? And you're kind of stuck with like a sole-source thing. So, it's hard to like get too far away. So, if we go to another cooperating purchase system and say, we're going to get away from TMI, well, we're still going to end up with TMI.
Because if they don't talk to each other, then...
Because they are the Daikin sole-source, you know, platform that we have developed. So, in the end, we're always going to end up with that. And I think the big thing is if we get more pricing through the TIPS program and not the AMIA through another company, we're just keeping everyone honest.
The other thing is, is, and I have the utmost confidence in you, knowing you as I do, Andy, but we have used them and we've used them so many times. And I don't know where you thought we might be with this, you know, with the continuing relationship with them, you know, and the fact that we will always have to continue with them. Is there any way to say, employment on the board, that we would really like them because of our continuing faithfulness to them? Could they do anything to the price?
Oh, sure, yeah. I mean, that's, yeah, that's always something we could bring up because we are on their sole-source platform. So, you know, I totally agree with that.
And then, how are we with Mark Twain? Will there be anything else that we're going to have to add down the road for that? That they will also have that potential business coming down the road or?
So, we went with train with Mark Twain. We got off of the Daikin platform. And we, we have trained with them, with Mark Twain and Nick Groff. And a lot of that is keeping everyone honest with the price. So, so, yeah. But we will have the Daikin relationship for a very long time here.
Appreciate the update.
Will you help me with my, I feel that I have a knowledge gap. I don't understand why we have to replace the duct work.
So, there is a, the return and, the return in supply or duct work for a hot deck and cold deck are different than what you would have for a modern HVAC unit for rooftop. So, basically, so with a new VAV system, VAVs all have reheat, which is electric reheat inside of the box, which is in each classroom. Whereas like currently, the VAVs, hot deck, cold decks, don't really have anything other than valves that control whether heat goes in the rooftop.
So, this really is modernizing the whole system.
Absolutely, yeah. So, and, and, you know, for, for a little bit of confidence, the upstairs and downstairs of this building, which would basically, what we're updating this to be, have worked pretty well the last four years. So, that's all we basically did, which was just kind of equalizing it and making it the same kind of system.
And they expect it to be more efficient?
It will, much more efficient. So, in fact, this part of the building is probably the least efficient across the campus.
It's, it's not freezing.
So, with all the projects that we've done also, so like the auditorium project that we did with the new water shore sea pumps, the gymnasium project that we just finished up, and this one potentially, we do get Ameren credits, so.
And is the goal to do this over the summer? It sounds like it's a pretty major project.
So, the reason, you know, we're, we're trying to push this into December so that we have time to order all the product and make sure we get it in time.
Is this our last HVAC project?
No, but it's our last like huge, it's huge. This is a big one. We're replacing basically original equipment from when we were just opening windows. So, the next couple of ones, we've got like some dehumidification projects and things like that, but they're not nearly the size of this.
So, where did you think it was going to come at? What were the numbers before and how much has it gone up since? And not trying to put you on the spot, just...
No, sure, yeah. So, so, it's weird because I was actually going through like an old office that we had from a couple, a few years ago, which had a lot of that stuff. And I was going through the, some of the VE things that we did from, you know, the 2019 project. I, I looked at them a few times and I'm like, I don't know if this is actually accurate. But like, I can see where you're like in the midst of a project and doing something and like saving money that way. So, like, you know, not doing this HVAC during the project probably saved us around $100,000. But it didn't, you know, with COVID and then we, we tightened everything up, we closed everything off. It didn't really save us anything. It actually probably cost a little bit more. So, it's, it's, it's hard because, you know, I wasn't on board and there were other people. So, it's hard to say what, you know, what happened there, but...
No, I was just saying, there was a number given and I don't have it. When we just asked about the five-year plan, so has it gone up since that?
It was like 174,000 was something along that line.
So, it's gone up from that thing we just had recently to? Okay, that's what I was getting at.
And a lot of that was because we thought we could do the hot deck, cold deck, like redo that and, you know, make that work. And it just wasn't going to. It went into doing the VAVs and then we had to upgrade the electrical and do the ceiling stuff. So, we were trying to do something less invasive, you know, in the beginning. Let's do something that doesn't interrupt stuff. And then, it just wasn't going to.
So, then when you give us that again, Amy, and when we have to then look at that, or is that something that goes into the finance and they'll relook at all that stuff that...
Yeah, it's going to be at the facility, the next meeting, hopefully, in December. I can't remember if it officially on the calendar, but the December one is going to be looking at the five-year plan and then talking through some of that kind of, I'm not supposed to use unexpected, the TIF money that has come to us earlier that some of these, expediting some of the things on the five-year plan. This is one that obviously it's a bigger hit than we thought it would be. So, that'll be part of what is proposed as well. It's kind of, we need to do it, we were going to do it. But then, what does that mean for the rest of the five-year plan? And what is, how does that, how do we prioritize what else is on that plan with the money that we had coming through the, liking on the right word, Matt, the rebates, but the extra TIF money that came in. So, we will bring that in December and then have that as a recommendation in the future. But this one, we wanted to move on, as Andy said, just from a timeframe standpoint. It was already slated to be done on the five-year plan for this summer. We just need to get this moving faster so that we don't lose the window to get it done. We just need to get this moving faster so that we don't lose the window to get it done.
So you're going to go out and bid this, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we're going to go out and bid it with another partnership.
Sure.
You know, basically the same product because we don't really have a choice.
Yeah, right.
And then we'll see where that comes out and we'll take the lesson. So, um, so, yeah, so the, the, the hope is that we can get it completed this summer. It's, it's been kind of a, since I started, it's been an issue. And, and we've gone like a year where it's been fantastic. And then like it's just little bits here and there. And, and the thing with, with this unit is like when it's down, it's down. You know, there's, you know, not much we can do there. There's not much we can do about it. So like when we have, you know, the newer units, we can actually at least relieve some of the issue. But this one, when it's down, it's down. We don't have any recourse.
Question, and I hate to ask this question because I hate politics. But do people in this industry feel like there's going to be any difference in prices? And does it behoove us to wait any time? I mean, before the prices just kept going up, up and up. And then, you know, rumor was let's wait and see what's going to happen with the election. And then there's going to supposedly be, you know, better things ahead. Just asking, you know, what, what does that industry think? And are they hearing anything?
That I don't know really. I mean, I, you know, I'm still kind of on the post-COVID train of just the escalations, you know, we, I don't know anything more than that. It's just like they're, they've been completely out of control and, you know, it's like, what do we do about it? And then not only the escalation, but production time. Production time is absurd for a lot of these things, you know? We had 75 weeks on units at Mark Twain. So we had to make sure we really knew what we were getting into. So I'm not quite sure about how to answer that, but.
I'll see if Kirk has the name.
That's a really good question.
I'm just curious, you know, are we, are we going to see anything?
Yeah.
And so before we had to really hurry up because every day things were like changing and whatever.
Yeah. It's a really good question. You know, I'm not sure, but it's a good one for me to try to dig into.
Yeah. Thanks, Andy.
All right. I'm about to nerd out. So I hope you all join me as we look at the first draft of our strategic dashboard that I think we've sat on many a Zoom meeting. Thank my entire team for being willing to sit on these Zoom meetings to, to make this dashboard. It is not, um, right now it is a link that you have. I've shared it with you. I also shared it with you in your email. You also now have accounts and I didn't get those till today. So I wasn't holding off on you. I didn't have the right access. So they fixed that this morning to give you as board members the ability to log in, but not the ability to change anything. So, um, hopefully that's actually what you have the authority to do. We're still, we're going to work around, but it will become this live link would be what we would put on our website once we're ready to unroll it. We are going to work on this header and make it a Brentwood banner. We just, that.
Not the highest priority.
Not the highest priority. And there's just been a little bit more lifting that we had to do as, um, as a team than we expected. We thought some of this would be done and uploaded for us and we actually had to create all of it. So we will have the banner, will be a Brentwood banner. But the homepage, as you see, and you can follow along on your computer if you prefer or follow along up here. But you will see this is really, and Tony put this together. The homepage is our strategic plan document that we have been passing out to anybody who is willing to take it from us. And is in every classroom in the district posted. So this is just the big areas or four big areas, but where the magic happens is right here. And I will say I'm very excited about some of this. So these are our indicators. So if you remember the packet that we went through in June, a very thick packet that talked about like measurements and what are, what were all of the strategic indicators? And how are we going to measure everything? This is us trying to make that make sense. We've added some that were not on the original list because as we've gotten into this work, it turns out when you write a strategic plan, when you don't actually work in the district, there are certain, yet, yet. There were certain things that didn't know or didn't know were important for us to have on there. So we have tweaked some of this, both the indicators and the strategies to make sense now that we've kind of got our feet under us over a quarter into the year and really digging into the work and what is, you know, actually achievable in a year or more or less. So where we get excited? We have student success is one of our areas. And so what we have is the data of, right now, we're just kind of gathering data. At some point, this, this is our baseline. So the goal then becomes to show the increases by next year. Some of the things may not have huge increases, but maintaining consistency being a big piece. And I will tell you for me, what I have learned over the last quarter is that there are also, there are areas that we have to grow. There are areas that we have work to do. But there is also, um, maybe misconceptions that we need to clarify about what we do and what we don't offer. Things like college credit, things like, um, the, the pathways. We have pathways. They already exist. Do they culminate in the level of a real world experience that we want them to? Not yet, but some, and so there's, I think, this is also a really great tool to just tell our community about the things that we're doing. And so when you see here, again, all of these tiles were built by us and uploading of data. You'll see here we have 13 pathways. We have not added this yet, but ideally what we will do is list, you can add graphs, which I'll show you. And some of the ones that have the view data button, some makes sense to have data, some don't. And some we don't have data yet. Making the graphs, to be honest, is a little tedious. And we actually have to do the work and just make it visible. So that some things have not been done yet. When you see here like the average ACT score, ideally we'll have a graph underneath that that will show the trends over time. You can also upload a graph eventually if we get to the point where you can see by the subgroups. But what I really like here too is that it talks about like the state average is 19.4. Ours being a 23.1 is significantly above the state average. So that's something that we should be proud of. That is also above the college and career readiness score. Um, we have six students with the seal of biliteracy. And then again, you can click on the info button to know what the seal of biliteracy is, which is basically saying our students 10%, a little over 10% of our juniors and seniors, which is typically the people who get this, mostly it's seniors. So we do 10% of our senior class last year were bilingual, which is very impressive. And we're looking at expanding that because the seal of biliteracy was actually designed to help, um, empower our English as a second language students to keep their home language. Was actually the foundation of why that was created in the state of Missouri. So now that we've educated our multilingual learners on that and our world languages department, that that's actually the thing. I actually think that number may jump up very quickly.
So does that need to be a percent of our student body that are?
Yeah, we've gone back and forth. So this is the feedback we want. So it, it goes back and forth of what is.
What's the most important?
What is the best to show? We can do percentages, but then junior, senior.
These are all, the, the top row are all for the class of 2024. So that would just be the senior class. And so like the seal of biliteracy, you could earn it as a junior, but we record it when you're a senior.
Right. Okay. So we could look at it from senior class.
Percentage of the senior class.
So, but, but the point being to the right, what you're saying, this is something that we've grappled with of like, so I'll show you here too. When you come down to, uh, participation in after-school activities. Like this was really far harder than one would expect it to be, but we, we quote the number 70% all the time. And when you want to show growth, it's hard when you say 70%. And actually the gentleman who walked us through this entire thing was like, it's not 70%, it's 69.5% or it's 71%. Like when you round it, it is hard if the purpose of this is to show growth. And it's easier when you look at numbers. I go back and forth on that. So I'm not, again, I also think the purpose, we can define what the purposes of this for us in Brentwood. If it's just to tell our story as we move now that we have this baseline and we're showing growth, what does that change in? But when you look at our participation, and I separated this out because it was really interesting to me. The Misha sports and activities, what are qualified, there's a hundred, and this is just fall. So just notice it's in the fall. And you can look at the data. And what I also think is the story we tell about not offering, there's not enough things to offer. Well, here are the just Misha sports. So that's cheerleading, cross country. And you can see the number of students that participated in each of the sports that we offer in the fall. But if you go back, scholar bowl is considered Misha. Isn't that interesting?
Is it really?
Did not know that either until I was reading. You do not want to know the amount of time sucked that it took to go through. And then also cross-reference because kids are signed up for multiple things. And so I actually went through, you'll notice that the number. We're going to find a better way to record this. So I don't have to get sucked into it as much. But where the number is the actual number of students that are involved. But this number, if you edit up this chart, is far more than the number that's on the A D's. But also these are just fall after-school activities. Just fall, just right now. So again, I, I want to challenge the notion that we don't offer enough after-school activities. Because really anytime a kid asks for something, we try to make it happen. What I loved at the information night, we had, I don't know, Kitty, you may have not noticed it, but they were sitting right next to you. I was sitting back there and, um, Dr. Ayo was naming some of the things we have, like if you like Dungeons and Dragons. And this mom reached over to her son, like pushed him. And he's like, yeah. And then it was like, if you like robotics, then you can hit her other kid. And it was like, they were like nodding and smiling. And so I just, I want to use these also again as opportunities to show what it is that we really are offering.
What is the average number of afters, after-school activities that a student is involved in?
Oh, I don't.
Because that way, that's something.
I have it. I could get it for you. I didn't, I, this was done a little bit behind a little bit. I would say anecdotally, don't hold me to the number. I would say between three and four. I would say between three and four. There were many that had six and seven. But I would say there were more kids, I wouldn't say more, there are about the same number of students that had six and seven activities that have one. So when you look, I mean, it was like the outliers, but I would say three to four. And I could get that number. I did.
I was curious to know, again, because students, a lot of students are, they're really, really involved and they have multiple clubs. And that's good to know that we're offering. And they're able to attend all those others where you, other districts, you may just only be pigeonholed and have enough time to do one activity.
We spoke with a mom at information night who was so excited because the picture of Logan that was just here was up at the information night. And Melody, Dr. Tom McLeod was talking about how he represents such a great representative, representation of what we can offer here at Brentwood. Logan would be successful anywhere he went. He's a great kid. But Logan is able to be the student body president. He's able to be a varsity sport athlete. He does cross-country and he played soccer. He was able to be involved in all of these other different activities that his, what the, well, it may have been, yes. But one of them was saying his, his resume, when he applies to college, far exceeds anything about what the number of APs he took, right? It is, he is so much more well-rounded and his story that he is able to tell when he goes to these colleges is, is a different story than you'd be able to tell in a very large district. So that is, that's why I wanted to separate out these numbers. Also, this number is insane. 149 out of 197 students are involved in something.
That's the 25% that aren't, I mean, or target them and try to bridge?
Yes. But this is a very good number for high school involvement. And so yes, absolutely. We want to find out what, you know, it almost is more jarring to some extent that you're like, okay, well, then if ever, so many people here are involved. Why are you not? And there are so many things to choose from. So digging deeper into that. But this is a, again, an important narrative that we, we need to highlight. So you can also see, yeah.
Is there, what you said, this is a high number, which I, I assume is correct. Is there data available, when somebody's looking at this, if I look, I'd see 149 out of 197 and that, that looks really good, although I don't really know if it is or not. Is there, kind of like when you, you showed ACT scores and then you popped up and you can see what the average of the state is and you can compare that?
I can, we can, yeah.
And I don't know if you could do that and all, but I, I would suggest keeping an eye on maybe things that would put these things in perspective, you know, something.
So when we.
That might be really hard, but I, I don't know.
It, it's harder to get the number because schools offer different things. So, but we came for the Misha part fairly well. The other thing to remember is this is fall. This is only fall data. So there may be kids in 149 out of the 197. So as we gather this data, the 112 that are playing winter sports, that didn't play fall sport. So there, the, right now, we're just gathering as much data as we can to figure out how do we determine what our baseline is to set what those growth targets will be moving forward. Especially in these kinds of areas where we don't have a ton of historical. We could dig and find it, but it would be difficult because we didn't keep it. Misha stuff, it would be easy. We could get more information on Misha. The participation in after-school activities is a little bit more challenging. And that's, that's the one I would say is a little bit harder to get, but not necessarily impossible.
I'm saying, you know, just keep, I, I would suggest keeping that in mind as this is being built to the extent explain what these numbers really mean, you know? They look great, but I, I don't have perspective maybe, or somebody looking at it wouldn't.
Yes. The more places, so that's where two, where's the right place to compare to other, and then where are we comparing against growth against ourselves? What we want to provide. And I don't have an answer for that yet, uh, as we're starting out with this. So.
It just to piggyback, so this is just looking at high school right now.
Yes, I have it up. We are meeting on Thursday, Thursday with middle school and high school A Ds. And I talked to Doug today and we're going to get the information. So we'll be adding middle school as well.
But does that include other, um, activities and other clubs as well? Not just, you know, sports related?
That's what it is. For middle school, yes, it will. It will do the same. It'll be participation in after-school activities and they won't be Misha, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We do sports or whatever, how will we decide to check it?
Those when the middle school comes in, are you going to clump it all into one? Are you going to have separate tabs for?
We will see how it plays out. And if you have feedback and care, I mean, some of it is like, how much do we put in one spot? Is it better to tell, what's? Again, we wanted to tell a good story because this is going to be publicly facing. We want it to be honest. But what is the best way for people to digest the information? So is it better to be 612?
Yeah, I would just say just to be very clear on it because when I'm looking over this, you know, if some of these things are only high school and then some of them, you said fall, but one, just, I'm not trying to offend you or anything, but there, I would be more clear in these descriptions, whether it's a fall thing or a high school thing or.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Not a problem. That's what the purpose, I should probably also clarify that. This is the purpose of tonight is feedback on this. This is not a lot, I mean, it is live technically if I sent this out, but like this is, we're not putting it on our website yet. We've got work to do. And I will, I will also put out there that it won't be perfect when, if we, it will be an evolving data piece as we get feedback even from the community. The nice part is it is very easy to change. And I think something is better than nothing. So, but I do agree with you about the clarity, um, in the description. So we've been, sometimes also you get a little too close to something.
You can see that some of it's in there, but then on the other, so I mean, I'm sure your intent was to.
Yeah. So then you also have our academic data. This is our N W E A data that we're sharing. So you can look in here and we've got some graphs. Percentage of students achieving in the 61st percentile or above, which is the top two quintiles is 67%. You can again see what that means. And then you can click here and we have some graphs. So you can see kind of where we are over the course of, um, the years. So seen some growth. This is district-wide. Um, we are, again, we can build more graphs to have things like elementary, middle and high. I would probably not because of our size go, this is public. So I would not go lower than that because of just grade levels and like.
Is there a way for you guys, for administrative staff to understand at a more granular level? So you can take action in particular areas?
We already do. So yes, we already do. So that, to be, to be clear, that's, we meet with the principals. This is the data. That's what kind of, we're working with the Aubrey thing. It's a little interesting. So, but yes, this is the expectation. Rodney works with them, digging into this data. A lot of the work the curriculum department does. That's our expectation is digging into this, um, to N W E A, the level of grade levels. And that's one of the things the assessment committee is working on this year. So yes, we've got that covered. This is more for the public facing. Okay. So then you can also see some things that we added. I'm just going to scroll through here. You get the kind of layout. School culture, this is determined the best way. So one of the action steps we had and have. School culture, this is determined, the best way, so one of the action steps we had and have is looking at a tool, but the DESI tool that we're required to give through MSIF, we gave last year. And we had the data, so we just are using this from the spring. And we pulled out what we felt were key components of positive school culture, which is student satisfaction. We don't have student well-being yet because that is through our Sabers data, which students are taking right now. So that's why that says an A. We will have data. Positive teacher-student relationship and then staff satisfaction is here. Community is under the community engagement one. But you can see through, and again, this is also data that's available that we will get, it just went out. So please encourage your neighbors to take the survey, it's important. Students will be taking it, staff's taking it at faculty meetings and the students will be taking it as part of their advisories or in their classrooms. But you can see the breakdown, the assess, the tool measures more than just those pieces. But rather than have that many tiles, we highlighted the areas that we felt were the best, like that are related best. So you can see out of, they're all off on a four-point scale. This is a new tool for me, so I'll be honest, digging into what does this really mean is going to be new. But it is, at least we have some longitudinal data.
Is there, again, a way to contextualize these responses to other communities or?
So that's what I don't know yet from this tool. It is for the state of Missouri, so yes, there are plenty of other districts that are using it. I'm used to a different tool they could contextualize it with. I, I gotta do some digging on this one. So right now, you can only really contextualize it out of four. I will say, they color-coded it as to like positive, this, it doesn't match the color coding. But anyway, I have to do more digging into the survey. But there was no areas of significant decline in our cultural and climate survey. Because they do color-code it that way, but I don't know enough about how they come up with that number to speak on that component.
But zero is.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was assuming so, but you know.
Yes, no, exactly. It's good to know. So the four-point O strongly agree, you're strongly.
Got it.
It's kind of a four-point O scale of strongly disagree, disagree, agree and strongly agree.
Administration, have you, like, where, like, the spread of this fall?
Yes, they know it by their.
Two point nine nine on why these could represent something. A lot of positives and it's a reality, not getting so good about things that you're looking into.
Yeah, so now have they yet? This is new. So I do not know if historically we've done much digging into this. Will we now? Yes, yes. So that's part of, and that's the best part of, what I'll tell you is putting this together is, although again, it was a little more than I expected it to be. It has been a really good process because it has helped with clarifying some areas. And that's why when we go to the strategies, you'll see some things around. I don't necessarily know if we need a different tool, we just need to actually use the tool. This is free. I will tell you, the other ones are much more expensive. And if it's giving us what we need it to get us to then talk through what is actionable, is it really necessary to go through all of that? And so those are things, we're still kind of getting a lay of the land. So then you can see diversity, equity and inclusion. So we look at by student group. We specifically chose that language because that is the language of our accountability system in the state of Missouri. And so we define what student group is defined by DESI as students who are Black, Hispanic, multilingual, earn interest, receive free and reduce lunch, or have an IEP, fall in that category. And so you can see where there's areas from an academic standpoint that we need to do some work on. And extracurriculars, I do not have that because I don't have it because of how we have the data. So that one maybe needs to disappear for a while until we are able to accurately reflect that. Unified community engagement, Tony and I were just talking about this yesterday to try to like create that baseline of what does, you know, reach? You can kind of see what that means. And then growth, like what is expected growth? We don't actually necessarily know. And then also having to remember things like Facebook, we, we post less in the summer. You know, like there's two weeks over, whatever, you're going to see a little bit less. So there's just certain things of like, what is a good number? We're, we're kind of collecting this as baseline so that we can kind of see year to year, like, okay, the first four months of the year, this is where we were this year. What will that be next year and how can we go from there? And then how do we report that? May look differently as we evolve again and these become different.
So this looks very social media focused.
Yeah, well, right now it's the data.
Maybe different tracks of interaction.
That's one of the questions that we, Tony and I talked about with his board advisory of what are the other ways? This is a harder one, our HYA, we asked them, like what are, because it's very, if you're not in social media or these are not necessarily the things we said were going to be the measurements, but they're the only things we have data on right now.
It's easy to get the data.
Yeah, so what are other ways of, like a number of events?
Does area make growth to more.
Yeah, it may evolve.
Like engagement rate, for example, on Facebook posts and Instagram posts, there's an engagement rate. So you know, you're putting something out there and if somebody's just clicking like, that's great to understand the like. But if somebody's adding a comment, is that engage, that's your really where you're engaging your community. So that might be a good way to measure some of your social media reach.
And then also looking at like parent square was another one, like, you know, we, we do our, so when we, actually I'm going to use that as my, oh, one more thing and I'll go back to that. We also add a district profile just to also put things in context. I, I use this year's data based on the September twenty-fifth count because it's a better number. So, but anyway, so the people can put things in context as to where we are as a district profile. But when you come to strategies, as we talked about with, as you were mentioning, communications. This is the part where it is a, it's an interesting thing. So you've got all of these are the objectives under each of the strategies. And this is, this is not super mathematically. Let me show you how this stands and then I'll talk about the communication. So you have your four objectives. You'll notice this percentile over here. You click on your strategies. These are the actual action steps, I call them action steps, HYA calls them something else. They call them strategies, but it's something else. So anyway, so these are the strategies and where we feel like we are in them. When you see details, you'll see artifacts. So you can look at the actual things and we are trying not to move any of our measurements without putting an artifact to show that we have moved it. Some things are going to be, and this is where this math, so I thought this was a little fancier, where it was going to calculate. Then however, it doesn't, we have to do it ourselves. And so you're asking me to do some basic math that doesn't really work the way that it's, because not everything is, yes, it says we're seventy-five percent on that one. But it doesn't mean, it doesn't have the same weight as some of the other ones. But this was as best as we could. And instead of putting thirty-three point five or thirty-two, I kind of tried to ballpark it. So I hope you're all okay with that. If somebody's a mathematician and tells me my math is wrong, I will take that as right, as I know, I know. Now, I will tell you that HYA recommends we not have these. Right now, they are public because I need you to be able to see them. Is why they recommended that I give you all access to be able to see the, to see these, but not be able to change it so you can log in. This is a very granular level. It is really the what we do every day that he says gets a little in the weeds for the public, which probably don't want public facing. That this level, just this thing itself, the objective, something, this objective is with its overall, is what we would want to keep public. And then, then as a group, we can see these strategies. If that makes sense. So again, when you come down to the unified community engagement, as I was mentioning, one of the things, and now I'm not going to be able to find it. But one of the things was like having this, there is one thing that was a hundred percent, it's this, thanks to the. I was really excited. It's because of the, oh, it's in a different category. Because of the Brentwood, the spotlight on Brentwood, it's like a hundred percent.
Oh, I did see that, actually. I was looking through there.
Okay, that's a little credit on that one, we're doing it. But one of the things about communicating on a regular schedule.
There it is?
Yes, oh, this one. So I, I actually added this. It wasn't in our original strategic plan, but it's been feedback we continually get. And the idea that, this was a huge thing and we started at the very beginning of the year. Our principals are expected once a week. They have to use the Brentwood bulletin. They have to push that out through, through parent square. And now, to the point around, now we can also see in parent square how many people are actually opening those. And so that's data that we could put on the indicators that we didn't have before because we didn't have our principals doing that. So it wasn't even on the radar to have as an indicator. So over the course of the next five years, as we live in this plan, it is very possible that there are going to be things or ways that we can measure that either don't exist yet or we haven't thought of how that lives once we actually implement it. So again, this becomes a very living and breathing dashboard, which I do like about it. And again, you know, comes time to talk about what we accomplished, you will see, you will see things with evidence attached to them, which is really great. So yeah, and so I'll, and one final thing and then open it up to any questions or comments. One other thing with this is some of these, what you will see, my goal is that at the end of this year, we will present this. And I'll present it to you also as part of, this is where my evaluation will live. This is where cabinet's evaluation, like this, as I shared with them, this is really a great way for them to be able to show the work that they've accomplished through the year. When we get to June and we have our board retreat, the goal, the cabinet would be at the board retreat and we would have a conversation of here's what we've done. And they can share with you the, what work we've done. Here are things that maybe we thought we were going to get done that we didn't get done. Or some of these will not ever be done because they're kind of continual evolving processes. So that may stay at fifty percent, but we're continuing to work on it. Or we're at a hundred percent and now we're going to tweak it because this is what we're going to do next. And so we can use this as the guide for that conversation as to what's the next layer that we want to learn. So that's the.
As you're going through those though, like the strategies and you said something, are you guys going to add additional strategies if it makes sense based on feedback from other areas?
Yeah, yes.
So it's still, it's truly a living, breathing document.
Yes. So to me, this is where we have that paper we looked at last year. This is where we just house it all. And because the strategies are not public, it's to me like what I think of as curriculum is the same way, right? We should have the core public, you should have your essential standards public. What teachers teach every day or the unit detail, you don't need to have that public because that changes based on the kids in front of you, based on what's going on. So you need to be able to adapt and live that. That's what these strategies here to me are, is the part where we as a team, we are, again, committed back to our presentation on the role of the board. We are committed to the objectives that you have outlined to us. But with our expertise and our knowledge of our different areas and being boots on the ground every day, we need to change or tweak or we just bring it and then you will always have access to it and can be able to explain the why behind that. So it's a living breath here.
Good job.
How fun is this? I mean, it is ninety minutes, like.
It is really awesome, like.
When that says Brentwood purple.
I would have just been excited for the indicator screen. I mean, it is just, it's awesome. I mean.
It is the most efficient, I will say again, it's been a different process than I expected, but it has been very good for us to kind of have these conversations.
And who's going to be in charge of inputting all the data on it on.
Okay, that's a really great question. Well, you know, who do I think and who is, it's different. What we are going to do as a cabinet is, so it is us. There is no management, not creative. So we will do, we will update the data three times a year because we have an assessment with our benchmarks. It feels like a natural, I should say, we will update things that make sense to update. ACT score is not going to update three times a year. But the other data we will update as, and we will update the strategies three times a year. We can't live in it, this would become a full-time job. So we just have the fall assessment window, that's what that data is. The winter assessment window will be January, February-ish. We will update it again and then we'll update it again, you know, May, June, before the board retreat. And so that's where you'll see, and again, strategies too. So it doesn't mean we're not working in between, but it just, it would become quite the time suck if we tried to piecemeal it all the time. As we're doing the work, remembering to update that. So we're going to just set those three benchmarks over the course of the year. And that can also be something, as a board, if we want, we can bring, we can pull it up at a board meeting too. Like if we want to do, align to those three times, this one, we're already at November, so it may, whether it makes sense to February or April, just to, here's another reminder. My hope, depending on how quickly the banner is able to get and to do some clarifying of some language, would be to get this out on the website. But I want to break it the very latest, I would like maybe before then, but then we hit the ground and be able to have that running. We just want to make sure we've had everything.
When this gets updated, would there be a, you know, overview of where we're going? Kind of a summary presented to the board of our progress?
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, is that the three times a year would be kind of the, right, here's what we've done, here's what we are still working on. And June, and June will be a big part because that's the retreat where you're out with guide. You know, based on what we've done this year, really giving us the direction as the board that you want to see. So we can then build out those strategies to achieve.
This would even be great in the polls for the people that are not on our website that maybe are just community members. Like just the, the indicator screen was cool. Like maybe we could send it down to have just this page, you know, they wouldn't be able to go into the, view the data, but we could say where it would be, you know? And also, and I'm not trying to put more on all of you guys, but I think one of the things, as an elementary parent, when I first started in the district, I didn't know the cabinet. And just maybe having each one of you guys pick a PTO. You know, the more the whole district can know all of your faces, the better. Not just when there would be a discipline action or a curriculum action or whatever, but just going and introducing yourself and then just kind of giving a preview one of the three times, not, not every single time, but just like picking one of you to do each, you know, fall, in January, whatever. Because then it also just gets you out in front of people and they know you more than just, you know, and I just think it would be awesome.
Tony and I talked about that with the spotlight on Brentwood too, so that's something as well. I agree, the more we can get in front of people. And once we've rolled this out, we'll want to share it. The nice part is we have that data and so now it's easy for us to share wherever. It's not us all every time trying to find it from five different people. It is here. So I, I mean, it is, it is very nice. So yeah, so we will continue to, it'll evolve, it'll keep evolving as you're looking and there's feedback. If there are indicators that you're like, man, who do, could we, could we calculate community engagement this way? Or have we thought about that? We're open to suggestions. This is not, again, we want it to be evolving. And we want to make sure that it's telling the right story. And how we have, well, again, it's baseline right now and so how we, like, what is the growth? Because if it go, like if the indicator right now shows this and then next year it's seventy percent, but I didn't know it was sixty-seven, the view data part will become very important in updating those graphs to keep kind of that longitudinal view. Because the indicators themselves would just give them the blur. So we'll have to kind of play the battle a little bit, but.
And then.
I was just going to say, but all the data, this is the baseline. So like, I'll use enrollment as an example. We have historical enrollment for each school.
Yeah.
Is there any thought of providing some of that historical data?
Yeah, we've done it in some places and I have it, I can, again.
Just to put, I mean, I guess I'm trying to think of also longer term as well, you know, as we, whatever comes down from the state about school choice, for example. What is our capacity at each, at each element, at each one of our schools? We might have to start asking, answering that question at some point, right?
I hope so. I hope we get to that point. Yes, I, the graphs are not as easy to make as, they have not been done. It's a time factor, not a, we can't. Yeah. I do think, because I was actually playing with the spreadsheet, I made a copy of your spreadsheet, Ryan. I already have Ryan Hudson's and then I made yours and I actually figured out how to use the formula, so it helped. And I added our 2025 school year, September twenty-fifth count date, so I have it updated. So there's things that I can put in here, but it, it's just not as easy to do and not, it's not as seamless with getting it uploaded. So that's why some of the historical data is not there yet, but we will continue to kind of evolve on that one.
How will this also be reported out to the teachers? Like to me, if I was a high school teacher, like how often do they know what our average ACT score is? Is that something that?
No, so that's actually a great question. So this will be rolled out, I wanted to roll it out to you first. And then we are rolling it out to the principals next week at our admin meeting. And then I'll have them share it during the faculty meeting so that teachers can see this and know this information as well.
Because I think that's so, like if I was a teacher and say, last year, the average ACT score here was say twenty-eight point five. ACT score here was say 28.5, and then it was 23.1 now, like to me, that would be an incentive to me to be like, wow, I don't want it to be like that, like I want to, you know, it would be an individual goal for me, because that's just who I am. And so I think the more data that we can also share, I think we heard it in the meeting we had the other day with the student engagement, you know, just from some of the faculty saying, yes, our, our plan was so nice to have, have it in their classroom, and have something visual to look at, I just think, I'm a visual, a visual person, I think a lot of people are as well, that the more we can even give this to our staff, it's reporting back to them, it's communicating to them, it's either helping them set goals, or letting them know what they are feeling as well, or how they're doing as well.
And a big part of, I think, absolutely, and I think this is another piece, you know, the principal's goals are aligned to their school improvement plans, and their school improvement plans are aligned to the strategic plan, so when they are sharing out kind of their information, this is important for them. A lot of the data is 612, but there's also plenty that's K5, especially academic, and school, and what's interesting is you'll see this district, but when the principals are able to then talk, well, my, maybe my building was a 3.5, and so they're able to be able to see that and talk through what is it that they're doing and sharing. So again, just getting this out is such a huge step one, and how we use it and how we share it, and making sure that it, I mean, to be honest, it's a lot of work, I want to make sure people are looking at it, I want us to use it, I want the community to use it. And there's a lot of great things to celebrate, and I believe in transparency, and it's, it's great that it's transparent, but I also, like I said, I, I do think some of it is that we got to make sure that if we're telling our story, it's the true story, and some of the things that I'm hearing are not actually accurate, so I want to make sure that we're, we're able to point to that. And again, we have 100% effort to grow, all, all school districts do, all continues improvements and things, so I want to make sure that we honor that, but I also think we need to make sure we're celebrating our successes along the way.
Does a parent square count as community engagement as a way, can we see what, like which links, because we get many a day-
Yeah, we can see, we can see what they log into.
Can we see how many of the many we get that people are reading?
Yes. We can, we can do the opening, so we did that, we actually just looked at it yesterday, so-
Could that be in, added to, as Facebook is more outward, but is more internal community engagement?
We can, so we talked about that too, we just wanted to get something out for, to make sure we're ready for today. But yes, that parent square can, absolutely, and those are specific to your schools, which I think is also really powerful. I, I still-
And then the district one does the whole bulletin.
Uh huh, yeah. And I'm, I'm, for community engagement, I, I just have, I keep processing, how do we, what are the community events, how many of them, how many are community versus individual buildings, I'm meeting quarterly with our PTO leadership to talk about that, and that was one of our goals of our first meeting, was just the idea of what are community events that we can do, K-12, kind of like the Fun Run, that yes, the money went to the middle school, but like that was a great community event, and what are opportunities that we can look through, and then how do we, how many are we having, and how does that grow over time? So just how to capture that is, I haven't quite landed on that yet, but that'll be something.
And will you be doing, so there's math, the math proficiency standards, will you be adding science and reading as well?
We don't take, we don't take the NWEA for science anymore, and the assessment may be changing for the elementary, we can put math data out, which would be fifth and eighth grade, once we, we have that, we could put math, the state math. We also are going to get our APR, and it will be a celebration, that's what I will share with you, that we will be celebrating, we just, it was supposed to be released today, we thought we were going to get to do a big unveiling today, Desi made some errors in the calculations, so they pushed it back, and they just told us, November 25th, we will be getting our APR, so that will be something that I'll put up there too.
Is that, that'll be something that'll go on this dashboard then too? Fantastic.
Yeah, it will, it will, it will be a celebration.
So the elements we love, will we just do the NWEA math testing?
That is report, we do fast bridge as well, but NWEA is a better benchmark for-
Yeah, NWEA, because all students take it, and they take it three times a year, it's, it's our best interim assessment that we give that shows growth over time, that one's more targeted and use more intervention, like as a screener and then for intervention, so it doesn't give us as much of a universal measure of student growth. So NWEA, and then also, yeah, we can add last state assessments, so math and, and of course, it's a surprise.
I will say, we should be very proud of our, very proud of our APR, and we should be proud of how our students perform on the state desk, but the NWEA is actually the assessment that gives us the best information. Any interim benchmark, even switching to one of the other ones that we may have to switch to at the elementary level, any of those are going to give us better actionable data as a district, but of course, we are compared to other districts, so it's important to, to look at our map scores, that typically is given to us so late in the game, it's very difficult to do anything with it, so just keeping that in mind, we definitely want to highlight the benchmarks.
Elaborate on changing from NWEA.
The, um, students are required to take, there is an assessment committee, creative committee, they're looking at different assessments, we have a literacy law that we have to assess students in grades K through three, and then we have dyslexia mandate that we have to screen for dyslexia, and we want to do benchmarks that actually give us data that help us intervene and meet the needs of students quicker than like a math. Probably those are all different tests, in the state, the literacy law requires we use one of the assessments that they approved. They took NWEA away, so we cannot use that for the fluency anymore, nor was it a good test, so also be careful when that goes, the NWEA is a test, fluency is an extra side piece of it. The tests that are approved are STAR, NWE, or STAR and I Ready are the two that we're looking at. Dr. Segura and I both agree, and this was my world previously, we need to assess students as little as possible to get as much information as possible to be able to meet their needs, and having three different kinds of tests for a seven-year-old in the first month of school is not good and not helpful. So we want to try to streamline that process, to get good quality actionable data that will meet all of the laws that we're required to meet, so that's why we're looking into making those changes for next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Again, any feedback that comes to you, please feel free, shoot me an email.
Would it make sense to move parent satisfaction up to school culture?
And I went back and forth because the other ones are up there, I just, I don't know, I think, I just thought community, but we can.
I don't know. I can see it both ways, but just kind of looking at from, if you were an outsider to this, seeing parent satisfaction under all these other Facebook and social media things, it might be, and it's a good score too, I mean, it's a really good score, so, I don't know. Probably just too nitpicky, but-
I would be curious to see what the group-
I think it should go up actually.
But think about for the college enrollment to share where our students are going. I know, I don't, it's a thought that I have, I would be curious to hear what other people think about that.
Oh, I think that's, I think that's very impressionable, the different places that they're going.
You'd have to see how we, we could probably just list them as a graph underneath it.
I also feel that if we chose to do that, it might be best to include more than just the current year, because there's historically just-
We'll have to see, because that's the part that I haven't yet mastered on here, about the graphs, of can you keep it where the graph grew, you know what I mean, 2024, this is where they went, 2023, this is where they went, 2022, it's just where they went.
If we could do that, I think you're, you're right, I think that's very helpful, go back the last couple, you know, two to three years, just because I think we need to be very impressionable, we need to be very, braggadocio, that's not the right word, you know, um-
Proud.
I don't know if it's a normal, but obviously it's an all time.
I mean, I really do, because that's, that's the conversations that you're having, that's what you're having at parties, or get togethers, or at the pool, you know, and when they hear that Brentwood students are going to Wash U in Brentwood, and how many of them got full rides, or full scholarships and things like that, a lot of them are taken aback, you know, even our, our parochial families are taken aback, or it gives us something to be able to brag about and be like, we have the same, we have the same numbers, or we, you know, we have the same experiences that, you know, your kids are having.
And you have to be scholarship-
More.
Oh, yes, gosh. I also don't know if it's worth, for me, this is a couple of years ago before this current role, I had called and spoken with the career and readiness counselor, it was Ms. Diaz, and she had explained that the ACT score, again, as we try to recruit and retain, that it included everyone in the district, including some tens and some very high performers, and I, maybe that, maybe that's true of all districts, is that-
It is true of all, it is true of all public school districts, which is why we put the state average in there.
Okay.
And I will tell you that, Ladoo will tell you their average is 26, and it's because about five kids get a 36 every year. Like, so they, everybody kind of, with the average, keeps the outliers to some extent.
To add, one percentage of our students take it versus across the state, because in the state of Missouri, the, the data that Ms. Diaz shared to populate this, showed that in the state of Missouri, about 65% of high school seniors take an ACT, and here, it's 100% of our students take either the ACT or the ACT workies, so, and it's 90-plus percent that take the ACT. So I think that also says a lot, that our, our composite average is much higher than the state's average, and we have-
Many more to get.
Yeah.
Gives our, our participation. Every school has to get, so in the state of Missouri, for our accreditation, you have to give ACT, the ASVAB, which is for military, workies, or-
Or ACU, well, I would say, you're, you're supposed to, but I think the fact that the state average is 65% tells us that many districts aren't testing all their students.
None of these two.
Yeah, so yeah, it's ACT, ACT workies, ASVAB for military readiness, or ACU placer, which is a typical community college placement test, like same as community colleges and stuff.
What is workies?
Workies is, for students who are likely to go directly into the workforce, it's a workplace readiness assessment, so it's more like technical writing, data analysis, like skills that would be used on the job for students who are going to bypass a college degree.
Okay.
And it, also in taking it, you can earn a career readiness certificate that you can take with you to an employer, that essentially says, I have the skill set that I can employ well, right out of high school.
Okay.
We could report the number of Bright Flight, do they still do Bright Flight?
We do, and we have that data, they presented it at the Infiniti, which is 30 or higher.
I guess that, I guess we have to, there's a tension between getting all this stuff up there that's good, and not turning this page into such a busy thing at people's school stuff.
That was the recommendation.
So maybe try to embed in layers, let the curious person can click on things and start learning more and more.
Yeah, and I think embedding it under the tiles, I will tell you that they really tried to get us to stick to seven per objective, we did not follow that totally, particularly for student success. Their, their, their recommendation when we were doing the training was to keep it in that, like no more than seven at the, at the most, because of that, not that you're not measuring these other things, but that if you measure everything, then it feels like, it's just, what are we highlighting really? So I do, I would agree, at some point, we may have a separate one of these, it's like college and career, that is kind of an underneath one, or that we can merge some of these pieces. We, Ronnie and I talked a lot about, like kind of, like the Catalyst program's a great program with our 12 students, but at some, as we build more pathways, and it's like, it may live under, like how do you group that all together, so there's some definite work that we can do there.
In the meantime, we have, Ms. Diaz does produce a senior class profile, a high school profile, like one pager, that she shared with us recently, that is what she sends with transcripts, and it has all of that, it has Bright Flight, it has ACT composite, it has where students are going to college, and how many are getting into different colleges, so a lot of the things that you all talked about, I just wonder if there's another place that we can just share that high school profile, if we're not ready yet to build some of those things in there.
Is there a way to put links in the descriptions?
I don't know if you can in the descriptions, we'll have to play around, I have, you can put links as evidence under strategies, but that wouldn't work because it's not public. Another thing, and we don't have a graph yet here, but this is a really good data point, is college credit, 61% of our kids have three or more college credits when they leave, so just looking at that and being able to chart like this expanse of how many they have, because the, I think I put it up here in the info.
Yeah.
Yeah, the average credit for graduate is 18.9.
So good.
I mean, that's a semester of college, a little more than a semester of college, at least on average. So, anyway, so there's some of that, that those graphs need to be built out.
Absolutely. I guess another challenge, we're saying a lot of things that all sound good, but I guess we have to keep in mind, what is really the purpose or the list of purposes of this thing, because, you know, we're, I like the idea that you want to build it to some degree in the board meetings, and this annual cycle, you know, and so forth, for those purposes, bragging to the public is a different sort of purpose, and, and I have a cough and I'm going to have to stop talking.
I do think that's a really important point, like I could put, this is my evaluation, and you're putting everything up there, I would dump everything on here possible and have all of it, but for the community, what are the highest, I mean, there is lots of data, we're data rich, but what are the things? And so I do think, we want to make, we want to be transparent and honest, but also make sure we're telling a really good story. Does that make sense? Like, because there are things that, we have areas of growth, and how you display the data could make, like are we highlighting where we want to grow, are we highlighting what we're doing really awesome? It looks sometimes different.
It should be both, I would think, right? It should help us drive different decisions if one of these indicators are sloping down, for example, right? Should, actionable items, so being transparent to a certain degree, I understand, you know, the public facing, they're going to see what they're going to see, or they're going to interpret what they're going to interpret, but if there's something on the backend side that you guys have visibility into, so you can really see where I need to take action on this for this particular semester, or this year, to increase community engagement, or increase student retention, or whatever that may be, I think that's the really powerful thing about dashboards, it influences behaviors.
And I think we're going to be in different areas of, you know, maybe at different times. I think for the next three years, I think you can speak to this, Katie, being where you are with your children, I think where we are for the next few years as a district is showing the community and our parents where we are, why you should stay, and why we are trying to retain you. And so I think this really is, in my opinion, what I would like to see us doing, is just continuing to tell our story and show all of this. Now, if we can continue to retain, and we get to the point where we are not seeing, you know, students leaving, even though if you look at our data, some leave, we still recoup, and there's not that huge of a loss, then it can be more of a different type of dashboard. But I think, I don't, that's my opinion, I don't know.
To keep it positive, is that what you want?
No, I was just saying, telling our, you know, he was saying, are we trying, are we trying to brag, or are we trying to just show some data, or whatever, and I think we're going to have different things over the years that we're trying to-
I personally think the best part about this is anybody in the community coming in and asking us a question, right? Because they're going to interpret it some way, and then reaching out to us, or reaching out to anybody in the district, and asking a question, well, you know, what does this mean, and what are you guys doing about it? Well, this is what we're doing about it, this is why this is important to us for the school district, so.
I think, Ryan, that's a really important point, because we will never be able to have everything in here that will answer every question for someone, and I think, Katie, to your point, like the ACT stuff, a lot of this, like, we are a public school, there is, I mean, if you looked at SLU's data, there's some of their data is going to be better than ours. We educate all children who walk in our doors, we are obligated to educate all children that walk in our doors, and I think we do a very good job of that, but you're not comparing apples to apples in the private schools, you're just not. But there's conversations that we need to be able to help explain to families, what does this data mean, and why, again, as it's been brought up, helping people compare this to, what is the baseline, what is happening around, like in public schools, we're, again, APR will be helpful, like we're, we're doing some pretty amazing things, and I think the important part is having real data, not, not, I don't say made up, but anecdotal, we all know everything, we're talking to someone, and all of those things, but now you have a place you can point them, and you guys know. So it'll evolve, it will continually evolve, we will take feedback, I, Mark, I heard what you mentioned about parent satisfaction, and we can absolutely, that's actually very easy to do. So we will bring this back, probably, well, I will let you know that we can update when we are ready, I'm going to give you one last chance to tell me if there's anything you want me to change before we make it live, and then from there, we'll bring it back to look at the data and the numbers and things, sometime in February, probably.
Thank you for all of the-
Yeah.
This is, this is phenomenal, I mean-
I don't even know how many hours you guys, I don't want to know how many hours you're going to do.
They, they make it user-friendly, I will give them credit, it is very user-friendly, it just, you can go down a rabbit hole from there.
But it's probably spurred a lot of really big discussion too, right?
I realize, one, for, I'll be honest, for somebody learning the districts though, you know, I had heard 70%, I had heard numbers and so on. I had heard numbers, and so now it was good for us to be able to sit down and force the conversation. So it was not, in no way was it, it was a word, I don't value it, just.
It's a good way to tell our story.
It's a good.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Okay, that moves us into the very end here for Board of Education. Oh, gosh, we have not spoken about MSBA conference. Seems like that was a million years ago. So, yeah, as, we've talked about, three of us went to the MSBA conference, and, and we walked away with some good conversations with other districts in St. Louis County. There were a couple of opportunities for us to get together and, and talk to Webster. I talked to people in Parkway, looking at different programs that they're doing. There is great work happening.
I got to the AI symposium, so Keith and I went. And the good news is, I think, they, most of what I learned was reinforcing what Mr. Esposito shared with us, which is, we're all learning it, and if anybody says they're an expert, they're not. But there's some great networks that, and resources that MSB has put together around AI that we've shared with Ronnie's Technology Committee. One of the best quotes I heard was that AI is not going to take your job, but people who know AI are gonna take your job. And so it was really, it's, yeah, it reinforced, a lot of the work we're doing is right, which is the technology, creating a committee, creating a plan, educating your teachers first. So just, it reiterated, to me, it reinforced a lot of the kind of stuff that we're, we had already talked about and that Mr. Esposito shared with us, so that was good.
And I will say, no, I didn't go this year, I haven't gone the last two years, but as you guys that are new on the board, when we, when I first came in, and Keith, I know you've been on a very long time, it is really not only just a great weekend for, for learning a lot of stuff, it really helped us network and build as a board. So I highly encourage you guys, you know, even if you can't do the whole weekend, it, it really is beneficial. I know we, I don't want to say slapped off, I don't feel we've slapped off, we had a lot on our plates, you know, over this last three years. But I do, including myself, have seen our attendance as far as a board, as a, you know, unified board, not going as much together. And I do think it is very beneficial, I know I'm stepping down, but just wanted to say, it really is beneficial, you're gonna learn so much.
Okay, you can't, just be careful what you're talking.
Yes. Go to conferences. But it is true, there were, I mean, there were some school boards where all the board members were there, and they were chanting and excited that they had everyone there. So it is a great thing for, for board growth and relationships, a great thing to think about for next year. I just looked up the date, October 23rd to 25th, in case there's someone that has to request it. It's good.
I, yeah, it's, I thought the, you all got to the student showcase.
Yeah.
It's kind of phenomenal to look and see the kind of things that different people come up with and that they're doing. So as part of the trade show thing, so maybe someday, maybe we can send some kids there to show off something.
We had Catalyst students at the one, we didn't have Brentwood, but now that we have 12.
Yeah. Yeah, it's amazing, and to hear the students talk about their projects and all their, their different teams, incredible choir. Like, there was a show.
Yeah, oh, my goodness.
It was amazing that performed for us during one of the.
Very inspirational.
Yeah, it's, it's a really good, like, weekend of cheering on public education.
And I, the first time in my life, went to a combined bookstore sign.
Yes, we did have to.
We did also have. We were, yes, we may have brought up the average age in the.
Certainly did. We were very cool.
I did not feel quite cool enough to be there, but it was very cool and very fun.
Yeah, we definitely raised the average.
That's true. That's good. Great, and then I know board committees are starting to meet. We've got the community engagement meeting this Thursday, so that'll be the first time that we've gotten together.
I'll speak for finance, we had a meeting for the finance board. Matt did one wonderful job presenting our school finance 101, and so that was well received. And we had a community anniversary presentation, and our next one will be coming up in December, going to be finance.
Good our student experience.
The student advisory, student experience advisory committee met, and we also, I loved the participation of the students and their poise and willingness to talk and just to enter a room full of adults and share their opinions. And I think we had really good feedback in Amy's organizing.
I will put it in the weekend update, actually, as a continue start and stop for the community and.
Okay, and then just a list of our upcoming events, as was brought up tonight, the first day to put your application in. If you want to be a school board candidate on the ballot here in April, it's December 10th. Our staff winter break open house, make RSVP to Kate at some point, if you're able to make it on December 17. And then we'll have a board meeting right after, that same evening, also at Marv Twain's. So we have a different location for our December board meeting.
And that is where we celebrate to our students, so that'll be a big one.
Fun one. And so that's, the closed is at 6 o'clock right now.
That is the plan, yes, unless there's a sporting event that I, I haven't, I don't have the basketball schedule yet.
Okay. Great, and then the school board candidate filing closes on December 31st at 5:00 PM. Kate, thank you for doing this, we will bring you snacks one day. And then just in January, we've got our policy meeting in January on the 7th, and our board business meeting on the 21st. That's what we've got, if I could have a motion to adjourn.
I move that you adjourn.
Nice, and then roll call to adjourn.
Alex Cisero.
Yes.
Ryan Dodson.
Yes.
Brian Flynn.
Yes.
Steve Breitemberg.
Yes.
Kevin Spoh.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Do you need anything signed, Kate, or any?
Yes.